I'd like to call to order the Springbrough School Board of Education meeting. Role call?
Babb?
Here.
Palage?
Here.
Good. Shaiha?
Here.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion for the option of the agenda?
Second.
Babb?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Shaiha?
Yes.
Yes.
1.3, can I get a motion for the approval of the October 9th, 2025 special meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Role call?
Babb?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Shaiha?
Yes.
Yes.
1.4, can I get a motion for the approval of the October 9th meeting minutes?
Seven.
Second.
Role call?
Babb?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
Shaiha?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 2.1, we have Springbrough Education Association report. Does anybody have anything to report out?
Nope, just hello.
Thank you. 2.2, we have Springbrough Classified Employee Association report. Any to report out? We appreciate your support in meeting here. Okay, 2.3, public participation pre-arranged. Nobody has called in to sign up for that. And 2.4, public participation on any agenda items. Is there any? Next, we have work session 3.1, our public participation. 3.2 is our report card presentation, this mental office and the building administrators.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, I am very, very excited that our principals are with us tonight to share in the report card presentation as an event here. Yes, we were a 5-star district and we have moved to 4.5, but we are serious about our Panther priorities this year of teamwork, action, and being unified. And we have been unified over these last weeks of truly digging deep into the data to figure out what do we need to do to correct this and improve back to 5 stars. So again, the principals are right on board. They are our active teammates. We spend a lot of time on our DLTs, really, really going deep into the data. So I'm excited to hear what they're going to present and the action steps that they're going to set goals around, and they have set goals around and work with their staff to take us back where we belong.
Ms. Ruber?
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, we have put a lot of time, like Carrie said, into really digging deep into the data in this report card and the data that the state uses to make, to give us the rating on this report card. We are here tonight as an entire team to share the highlights and the areas of improvement that we have determined to be our focus and our work for this school year, the '25-'26 school year. Beth and I are going to provide some information about the district level report card, and then each building principal will share the same information about his or her building. Like Carrie said, we're not satisfied, you know, by the drop from a 5 to 4.4 stars, but we do believe that it's a really small mountain to overcome. And so we think we've created a solid plan for affecting those changes that will help all of our students grow.
All right, so as Liz mentioned, we're just going to kind of give a basic overview of the parts of the report card, and then we're going to turn it over to the principals and let them tell you about their buildings. So first of all, traditional report card. As we break a traditional report card down, you have the achievement component and the progress component that are both worth 25%, okay? So those are kind of the heavy hitters for the report card as far as what they're worth. Then you have the graduation component, early literacy, and then CCWMR, okay? Those stands for college career, workforce, and military readiness. I finally learned all of those letters, right? In the order that they need to be, 12.5. And then gap closing as well, 12.5, okay? So kind of keep that in mind as we go through everything. Okay? All right, and then as far as our overall rating, achievement, we scored 5 stars. Progress, we scored 4 stars. Gap closing, we scored 4 stars. Graduation, we scored 5 stars. Early literacy, 5 stars. And then CCWMR was 4 stars, okay? And that was a new component. We'll kind of go over each one of these and just give you a little bit of information about each one. Oh.
There's still a lot.
There we go. Good times.
Okay, thanks. So we kind of wanted to give you an overview also. Can you see, like, I'm standing in front of this one, and this one looks like, are you guys good?
Yep.
Okay. Just cut this.
Just share the PowerPoint.
Okay. We wanted to kind of give you an overall view of the Warren, all the schools in Warren County. And so this is a chart that shows them. Just want to point out two things. One, if you see right here, we have our overall rating points are 4.094. So that's what our, the calculation gave us as an overall rating. In order to receive 5 stars, you need 4.125 points. So we are, we were .031 points away from having 5 stars. So that's why I say, you know, we are not satisfied with 4.5 stars, but also we know that that's something that we can achieve by really digging down and drilling into our data to see. The second thing that we want to, I want to point out is that only, in Warren County, only Springbrough and Wayne local schools had 4 or 5 stars across the board. If you look at Mason, they have a 5-star overall rating, but they had a 3-star in early literacy, a 3-star in college career readiness, lots of other districts did not. We're the only two districts that had 4 or 5 stars in everything. And like Beth said earlier, it's that progress piece for us because it's such a, it's such a heavy weight that having 4 stars versus 5 there is really kind of, you know, what we really want to focus on for next school year. So what are our strengths?
Quick question.
Oh, sure.
Can you say again, which were the two that were 25%?
Achievement and progress.
Achievement and progress?
And I'll share this with you guys as soon.
I think a picture was reading.
So starting with some strengths, achievement is historically, and again this year, a strength for Springbrough schools. We are, most of our grades and subjects are over 80% of students are proficient or above proficient, and that's just kind of a trend that's continued along. So the achievement, if you remember, is where this bar is set the same for everyone. Everybody's trying to hit the same bar in order to show achievement. So again, we were 5 stars in that area. And now their strength was early literacy. Even though last year our bar raised for that, we went from a 690 to a 700 being proficient on the OST, we were still able to have over 80% of our third graders were still proficient even without bar raising. So we're pretty proud of that. You'll notice on here, it says the improving K3 literacy, it says NC. It's not calculated for us. It hasn't been calculated for us for at least the last four years. That is based on how many kindergarten students come in on track. Or I'm sorry, not on track. And last year, this school year, it was 9% of our kindergarten students came in, took a test, and only 9% were not on track to be readers. So MAP, what we use for our diagnostic, changed their norms this year. This current school year, 22.3% of our students in kindergarten came in deemed to be not on track to be readers. So that means that next year, that component, that improving early literacy, will be calculated for our district because it's only not calculated if less than 10% are not on track. So that's something that we have to keep an eye on because that's a pretty big deficit to overcome when it comes to that, that measure. So that's something that we're definitely going to keep an eye on, but it's definitely going to be a change to our early literacy component moving forward.
All right, so then, gap closing. And if you remember from years past, gap closing has a lot of components to it, okay? So the gap closing is how well we're closing achievement gaps between our groups of students. And if you remember, in a couple slides previous to this, we said we received 4 stars. Well, a couple strengths that we really had in gap closing was the chronic absenteeism, which was 9.1. Now, this is one that you want the number to be very low, okay? Because this is the one that tells how many students, the percentage of students that were chronically absent. So our goal was actually 16.4, okay? And we got to 9.1, all right? So that was definitely a strength, okay? Another strength that we had was our English learners, okay? And you can kind of see, I'm a teacher at heart. So I'm going to come over here. This was our goal, and this is where we achieved, it's 62.2%, okay? And what that means is it measures how students perform on the OALPA, okay? So you can thank Matt Blair over there, that's right. And this change as far as that's concerned. So yes, so anyway, we are really helping those students to progress, okay? Now, we'll talk about some more components of the gap closing indicator in just a few minutes. Okay, graduation rate. Graduation rate, that's something that, you know, we always are, do very, very well on. I think last year we had a 98.2, this year we have a 98.5. So we are right there in the blue. And if you remember, it's four-year and five-year graduation rates. The four-year graduation rate is the typical round for a student. The five-year would be more for our possibly special ed kids or students that just take a little bit longer, okay? Areas for growth.
So obviously, we have some areas to grow, and you've heard about some of them already. The first one we want to focus on is our progress component. These are our value-added scores. And it's a lot of education speak, but basically what that means is that the value added refers to a statistical analysis that is used to measure the impact that we have, teachers and the district, on academic growth from year to year for each student. That is measured by looking at the current achievement on the OST. So how any given student performed last year on the OST and how they performed this year on the OST, and did that score go up? So that's what they're looking at over a three-year span. So that's what they expect to grow would be. And so they compare that, how we did, to other districts across the state and other students across the state. We know that this is an area that we have to make improvements in. We look at, we've been talking about fourth grade math, we've looked at fifth grade science, we've put some plans into place and some ideas that the principals will talk about. On top of that, at the district level, we are, we've set up a meeting with, they do sessions with the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce where they will sit down and look at some of your specific data and answer questions about it, so we're doing that. We've contracted with Hamilton County to bring in someone to really sit down with the district level team and dig into specifically this progress data and see, I mean, we were talking .031. There are some students out there that we can definitely capture, right? That we can push ahead to make progress, to make up that ground. So we're really trying to be proactive. We've reached out to other districts, we've looked around us and seen who've got 5 stars in progress around us in the area, especially where we know someone. And we've reached out and, you know, they're interested in meeting too and putting our heads together and saying, what's the best, because we thought, we progress monitor this using MAP, and we feel like we're making growth. And then it came out and we were kind of surprised. So we want to make sure that we're doing what other districts who are getting 5 stars in this area are doing to progress monitor this so that we know that we've hit the mark, so.
And as Liz mentioned, I'll kind of cover the 6th, 7th, 8th grade high school. 6th grade, English Language Arts, that's something that we've really struggled with for a few years. So we're looking at curriculum changes as far as that's concerned. And we have, we're piloting a curriculum in place now that has a lot of fidelity behind it, and the teachers are all in. And so we're going to, you know, hopefully that will help us as far as that's concerned. 7th grade math, that has progressively gone up each year, but we still have a little bit to go. And then 8th grade Language Arts as well. Both of those, we're looking for curriculum changes as well, possibly, or adding in supplemental information. We're really trying to push what we call the Ohio Readiness Assessments, which those are checkpoint assessments that actually go along with the OST and, you know, giving kids practice and monitoring where they are as far as the Ohio State test is concerned. And then, as Liz said, reaching out to other districts to see what they are doing as far as, you know, this progress component and how they're getting ratings, you know, that are a little bit higher than what we have.
Can we ask questions along the way?
Yes, sure.
Last slide. For the ELL, are you concerned with our population increasing? That that's something we're going to have to watch differently? I mean, your scores weren't great this year, and I just feel that we are having to, what are we doing to help with that?
So there are some good things to have with the ELL, which we showed you, but then we still have some, some areas to grow in, which is coming up in the gap closing. But what we're doing is really monitoring. We added, as you know, a full-time person last school year, and then we added another .5 person, like employee this year to really help support. So we're not, so Mr. Blair wasn't stretched thin from K to 12. We have some other, other supports available there. We're getting those same teachers trained in structured literacy, just like we would a reading teacher to help with some of the English learners, so.
We're bringing in an ELL person from Butler County to come in and work with our classroom teachers to see, you know, when you have students that end up in your classroom, right? And you might not have realized that they were coming. What supports can you give to these students, okay? To help them be successful in your classroom? And then others' teachers can reach out to you as well to kind of get information as far in supports as far as that's concerned.
My question on this current slide. One question is for 5th grade, they got 2 greens, which says met expectation, 1 red, but the all test, I'm assuming is an average, is red.
Right. I agree that, and it's over three years, the progress on all tests. Last year, the 5th grade, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but the English Language Arts, I think could have been blue. So even though they're still meeting, they might have gone from exceeded to meeting, do you see what I mean? So the other struggle with 5th grade science, and we tell you guys this every year, but it's not, it's the same every year, is that the 5th grade science OST, none of our students that are in our 4 or 5 compact math class in either building, so it's like 40-some students, right? None of their scores count in the 5th grade science test because they don't take the math test three years in a row. And that's what they use to make like predictions and predictions. And so that's, and like, we're at like 79. something for science and you need to be at 80. So it's not something that we're just like, oh wow, we're never going to get there. Like, we're, we're meeting with the science.
It says we're still working. We're still working on it.
My last question is, there doesn't seem to be consistency with where we're meeting the targets, either grade or subject.
Right.
That's interesting to me.
Yeah. And so, so also the way they calculate this is 2 years, 3 years ago's data is 25% weighted. 2 years ago's data is 25% weighted. This year's data is 50% weighted too. So that's, like, there's, there's quite a few variables in, in this data. And so we, we dig into, and we look, but like, from us, our standpoint, it's like, okay, we see where we need to grow, what can we do to get there? Because it's, there's a lot of variables.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah. Because they could even, you know, any one of these given tests and grade levels could like be, scores down here, and then they go way up, and then they go down a tiny bit. Well, that hurts your progress, even if it's not, even if it's still higher than where you started. You know, so it's just, there's a lot of variables in it.
But we're able to drill down into teacher by teacher, so if somebody needs support?
Yes.
Overall, they're all.
Yeah. It hasn't come out yet to us. We're not able to get into yet. I thought it was going to be yesterday, wasn't it? So when it's available with, yeah.
I love today. It's supposed to be today, but they deleted.
Oh, they did, okay. Any other questions?
Do you, the, you mentioned looking at a creative resource for 6th grade, 8th grade. Is that going to have continuity with what Witten Wisdom is in our whole library?
That's a really good question. So we are looking for 6th grade, arts and letters.
They're piloting arts and letters.
They're piloting arts and letters, that is correct, yeah.
It's the new version of Witten Wisdom.
So continuity, there, continuity there, yes. And then 8th grade is still, they're still kind of looking at a couple different curriculums, and so they're trying to decide which ones exactly they're going to, they're going to pilot.
This isn't the first year of full implementation of Witten Wisdom.
Correct. The first year of full implementation of Witten Wisdom. It's also the first year of a consistently vertically-aligned curriculum, K5, in at least the five years that I've been here. So that, I mean, it's like, I think there's a couple bonuses from, from that being real, especially the writing part and having that, the vertical alignment for that. But either way, like Beth and I have talked, and Jacqueline's been helping with that too. The 6th, 8th curriculum will have to be a knowledge building curriculum. You know, even though it's not required by the state, we just know it's best practice, so. Any other? Are you going to be blind? Okay, back to gap closing. So we had some strengths in gap closing, but we also have some areas of improvement in gap closing. So this is just English Language Arts. So when you look at the left side of the slide, this just shows our performance, this is our achievement, okay? So all of our student groups, except for our students with disabilities and our English Language Learners, hit the state goal for the performance index, for achievement. The crazy part about that is it also changes every single year. It's reset, the goal that we have is reset every single year because it's based on the top 2% of districts in the state, what their performance index is, average, and then that becomes everybody's goal. So we can't ever just say, oh, next year it's going to, we know it's going to be the same, let's try to. So that's just a moving target for us, which is why we're just putting things like MTSS in place. So we're making sure that we are identifying and serving the students that need it. And we're making sure we're getting the right students that need it. So we know that that will impact all student groups and not just one or two, you know, that. So then, but, so that's the good news. The right side of the slide is our English Language Arts growth. So the goal for us is 2, plus 2 or higher is the goal this year. And none of our, none of our student groups in English Language Arts hit that plus 2 for growth. So we obviously know that that is a huge area that we can make some impact in. And a lot of the things we've already talked about, the curriculum additions and some of those things, we really believe are going to impact those scores as well.
Okay, and then I'm going to hit on the math very quickly. So again, math achievement, I mean, we rocked it. We, you know, right here is where we were supposed to be, where you see all the circles, the bars extended. That's where our students actually fell, okay? So as far as math is concerned, you know, we achieved where we needed to. Math growth, okay? Again, kind of like Liz said, doesn't look as good as the achievement. However, if from zero, they are making some growth, okay? The goal is this line right here, okay? So even though these students here fall beyond the line or below the line, they still made growth. We still have two subgroups that we need to look at as far as that math is concerned. They still grew, they just didn't grow as fast as what the state expected them to, okay? Questions on any of that? All right, and then we have gifted, okay? Gifted, we had value added, which our students growing, we had 4 stars. Okay, we met that indicator. There's actually three parts to this indicator, if you remember. Last year, we did have 4 stars, but, or I'm sorry, 5 stars, but we still met that with 4 stars. Performance index percentage, we had 96.5. This was actually just a little bit higher from last year, okay? And performance index, as we've talked about, that's achievement, okay? Our students achieving. And then, last but not least, identification and service percentage, we had 62.1. Last year, we had 59.3. Now, if you remember, we did have a service change in K5, okay? So we're still looking at that, still making sure that that was, you know, a good move and make it in, and it looks like it was because obviously it is higher. But we're looking at many different factors and seeing how we can bring these students up. One of them is we are training more teachers as far as gifted is concerned, which is good for all types of differentiation, not just for gifted. So we really have that hands-on training that we're going to be doing, which I really think that's going to help our score as well. Questions about that?
What are the targets that we're trying to hit? That would flip it to net percent performance index, not net. Identification and service net, they both say not net, am I on?
That is correct. So performance index, I believe, then that one, that one's a moving target because it's based on the top highest 2% every year in Ohio, so that changes.
I'm just trying to get something, how far.
Okay, so how far we are off. I can give you what that, what those actual numbers are when we do your PowerPoint. I can give that to you so that we have it, so you have it, okay? This, and just for reference, okay? There were only 17 districts in the state of Ohio that actually met all three indicators. It's really hard to achieve.
It's 70, it's 97 and a half percent.
Okay.
The other one is 80%?
Yeah, 80%.
And that one's, that one's always very hard. And we, we service, we identify, and we service a lot of our gifted students, so, yeah.
So just that, is that like a disadvantage then because of the number of gifted students that we have with these set so high?
Not necessarily. They put a lot of work into like subgroups, ethnic subgroups. And so it's, you know, they're really trying to provide equity for all students. And therefore, we are also looking, okay, is the test that we're giving conducive to all students and to the different ethnic subgroup students? So, I mean, I think that's where a lot of it comes in. Plus, I'm working with Katie Pearson from Montgomery County ESC, and, you know, she's, she's looking at our report card too and seeing, okay, what tweaks do we need to make? All right, and CCWMR, okay? This is the first year that this one has actually been on the report card. So this one basically tells us how well we are preparing students for life after college, okay? Whether it be college-bound, whether it be career-bound, you know, workforce or military, okay? So we actually received 4 stars here. 5, obviously, was, was where we wanted to be. 4 was really, really good because, like I said, this is the first year that this has come into play. This is also the information from '23-'24, okay? Our '24-'25 information will actually be reflected on our next report card, all right? So what we're doing is we're looking at our tracking systems, okay? And making sure we've got solid tracking systems to see what our post-secondary students are doing. We're also looking at reporting industry-recognized credentials, okay? And how we can get that. We're kind of, again, we've talked to other districts who have received 5 stars. As far as this is concerned, and mind you, there were not very many, to see what they're doing. And so we want to try to then incorporate some of their strategies into what we're doing as well so that we're, we're sure that our students are ready for whatever comes after high school.
How do we track that? Like, what system? I'm thinking of my college graduates, like, how do you know what they're doing?
That's a really good question because it's hard to get surveys back, right?
Yeah.
And so that's where we're kind of, kind of running into that problem. And so we have some meetings set up next week with some other school districts to learn, okay, what exactly is they're doing? Because once kids are done with high school, they don't want to, you know, answer surveys and stuff based on what they've done before.
But you have some data here. Where did this come from?
Well, some of it is, I think what they did was they sent out a survey, and then that survey comes back.
Like a Google form?
Like a Google form to?
To graduates?
Post-graduates, mhm, from the class before.
So is it just doing it after their freshman year or their, after four years?
After their four years, after they're done. But the industry-recognized credentials, that's during their four-year period of while they're, while they're in high school. And you can even reach back into junior high as far as that's concerned as well.
If we have a welder at the Career Center who is doing posts for a year, do we have a way to, like, are we?
Those kids, we have a way to track, right? Because they're at the Career Center. And the other thing we have to do is we have to combine with the Career Center and collaborate with the Career Center to see, okay, are we getting all of the points that they're getting? Are we on track and on base with what they're reporting so that we can get all of those as well?
We did get 5 stars, so.
So, yeah, so we, you know, those, those plans are in the works as well.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Going to turn it over to Mr. Kyle Martin.
Okay. How long do I get?
3 minutes.
3 minutes.
I'll do my best, 3 minutes. Are you scared, you guys are still on the computer?
I can't.
You can't do two things at once.
Well, I can, but I can't click the link. I'll go quick. I'm going to talk about two items here. We're going to do the EOC scores specific to the high school, and then I'm also going to dive in for about a minute and a half into our AP data because I think it's really, really important that you guys as a board see where AP data is at a 15-year trend that you have the link to in your, in there. And I think you'll see some really awesome data in there as well. So just to highlight some things, they've talked about positive strengths at the Springbrough High School. We are a 5-star again this year. This is the 30th year in a row that we've been a 5-star high school. Our performance index score is 101.3, which is the highest it's been the last three years. It's steadily gone up. We've noticed some things. If you even look at some of our test scores, I mean, if you look at like 21 and 22, we are still, we were still recovering from COVID, and you'll even see that a little bit in our AP data as well. Achievement, our progress, our gap closing, our graduation rating of all, overall 5 stars. Another positive strength was our government US history biology had our highest percent proficient the last three years, this, this past year. And our English 2 in geometry, it increased from last, from 2 years ago, but our geometry's still not. still not where it used to be, and that's going to, you guys see it on the next, on the next slide. So I'm going to jump into our, our areas of weakness and things that we do need to address, and we'll come back to the, to the two links. Geometry is first and foremost. Geometry is no doubt the most rigorous test the kids take. It's the overall state average is usually around 41, 42, 43, 44%, when the other averages were percent proficient are 70s and 60s, or high 50s. Ours was a 70%, we've been kind of hovered around that area the last three years. So a couple of things that we are doing to address this, and the link that you'll see kind of gives you a little bit of a snippet of what we've been working on. We're analyzing that data, that's in that item analysis on our professional development days, and we'll continue to do that throughout the year. What that does is it talks about the percentage of students who earned credit and didn't earn credit on every single question that they took. It covers what, it talks to us about what standard that, that, that question covered, and then we can kind of see strengths from there. We also then looked at the released questions, and then, is there anything that we're noticing with how questions are being worded, how questions are being organized? Some of the questions in geometry are two and three-part questions, so they're things that we could be doing on our assessments to mimic what they will be seeing on those tests. So if you want to, Liz, can you click on that link real quick?
Yes.
Oh, come on, Kyle. I got the same issue. You got the same issue?
I have the same here.
I'm not logged in. You got to see this, though.
No. You're not.
Requesting it, Kyle.
He can't recover his talk.
No.
Is it good, Kyle? No, he's got to jump on the jump, jump to one. But anyways, it's all highlighted, and then we partnered last year's released questions and this year's, and we compared it to the questions that we had to see to really dive into the nuts of what's how they're asking. What we've noticed is the questions are being worded really in ways that we're not wording them or asking our kids to, to answer, and they're not seeing that, so we think a visual of that is a big part of that. As he's pulling that up, did you get it, Mr. Tutor?
Nope.
The other one is our college career workforce readiness development. As, as Beth talked a little bit, this is new for us. We do have some things, I think a lot of it is just some of our tracking. An example would be it shows that we have 0% of our students going in the military. Well, we all know that's not true because we have our Military Enlistment Day, and we have 12, 13, 14, 16 kids signed up. There's documentation you have to get from the recruiter's office that we have to keep on file. If we would ever report those kids, we have to have documentation that they're actually doing. So that's something I think with our college career readiness that we, that will help us, is just really looking at our tracking system and how we're making sure we're accounting for all those pieces. I believe this past year, we were at a 76, 77%. I believe this past year, a five-star was 85% roughly. So we have, I was in a meeting last week with the workout ESE, talked to a couple of schools about how they're doing that, got some really good feedback on things that they're doing. There are schools that have people in positions that solely take care of the college career readiness workforce. We looked at with our item analysis. So if you look, if you scroll down, you know, there's green areas with which are our strengths, we have red areas, which is areas of weakness, and then the two links up top are just released questions. But you guys have access to that, it's in your, it's in your PowerPoint.
We don't have access, so please give us access.
You're going to have to make everybody.
I'll make everybody have access. Yeah. Okay. If you refresh, you should go get it. Yeah, you can go back now, but they should go get that. Go back one more slide here. If you, Tyler, can you click on the AP data? Please tell me this works. Okay, good. All right, so here's our AP data. If you're looking on your screens, this will tell you off to the left, we have a number of exams, number of AP students, scores that are three or higher, the percent three or higher from 2010 to 2025. What you're going to see, you're going to see a huge increase in number of AP students and number of AP exams taken, right around the 14, 15 timeframe. When I came back from SI, this was a huge, huge area of, of, of strength that we, or weakness that we needed to tackle as far as increasing our AP offerings, really encouraging our kids to take the AP rigorous courses, encourage them to take the exams, and you will see, I mean, if you scroll over to the 2025, we had over, we had almost 1,200 exams taken. Now, one thing that's important to note, if you look at our enrollment, our enrollment actually just this past year was not much different than it was in 2019, and we went from taking 637 exams of 400 AP students roughly to 1,167 exams and 640 AP students. So you can look at this as long as you want, that's the reason why I highlighted the 15 in red is because that's when I really started tracking it, that's when I came back from SI, and you can see the difference. And I wanted everybody to kind of see what's the difference. Well, our increase in course AP offerings had an impact on that. Some people say, well, yeah, of course, your enrollment went up 300 kids. No, it didn't. Our enrollment really didn't go much up at all. It's just we're really encouraging, and we took off a lot of parameters that were in place to, that prevented kids from taking those courses, and we opened it up. And this was a big, big deal for us. So that's why I went ahead and put that in there too, because I think it's something you guys as a board would appreciate seeing and kind of seeing the growth trends of that. One of the big things I'll finish with is when we made this change back in 14, 15, a lot of things that I would, I would hear and then some concerns of people was that the more that you open up your AP courses, your percent of three or higher would go down. And of course, my prediction was it would not, but that was a concern of a lot of people, including myself a little bit, but as you can see, like, this past year, with our most exams were at 82%. So that's one of the highest three or four years we've had in the last 15.
I appreciate that because I know my boys have said those are the classes that they felt like prepared them the most for going into college. So I think having that large of a number of kids that have been through that level of thinking is a game changer for kids and really preparing them. So thank you for that focus.
The EOC data link is in there too. It's, it's kind of has some same information they have before. There's just a couple of things that I think it's important to note. Tyler, if you can click on that just real quick. The areas in red were areas that were higher than the last three years since COVID, it's the highest years we've had as far as our percent proficient. You can see our area of geometry, which is an area of growth and need. Our performance index score is in there as well. One thing to note with our algebra, we have 373 tests taken last year. Our freshman class last year had about 475 kids. What's that tell you? It tells you that our top math students, they're taking their Algebra 1 and geometry at the junior high. They're not in that percentage. We don't ever get credit for those test scores that those kids are taking with, they're accelerated math students. So if we have a class of 475 kids, we're having about 307 of them taking Algebra 1. So I think that's important to note on there as well. You can see why our American History and Government test taken is, is down, a lot of that CCP. Kids who are taking CCP are not taking the test. Any questions? I took, I think about eight minutes, sorry. I can talk for 25, if you give it to me.
He kind of thought this was Congress, so we could reclaim.
Yeah. But those links, I can leave live if you guys want to dive into them later. If you have any questions, shoot me an email.
Ask a question.
Yeah.
For the high school algebra, this is, this is our third year having Algebra 1.
So this was a, our second year of having Algebra 1B in our test scores. Yeah, so we had one-year gap, which was two years ago, which is our year that we were like 85.4% that year. So we had a little gap year where we didn't have that, and then it came back also, this is the second year. Yep.
And the second question is related to AP testing. Do we allow students in our honors class to take an AP exam?
Meaning if they're.
Because I know that that's a practice at some places.
So like, we do have students who are not in an AP course that do sign up and register to take the exam, we allow them to do that. Yeah.
Do they perform?
Um, I'd say the ones we have at the most in is our language. We'll have, we'll have students that are native speakers in a certain language, but they don't take the class, and then they'll sign up to take the AP exam to get the college credit for that. That's probably the biggest one. But typically, our kids who are signing up to take an AP exam without order class are, they're not prepared for that level of an exam, the rigor of it. So we do a lot of that. I think right now, we're doing the registration windows right now for AP exam, closes on Friday. I think we have 779 students, I think, signed up to take an exam, which is close to 101 we've ever had. Okay, you guys done making fun of me?
No, I'm proud of you. If I had said three minutes.
Sorry, guys, I took so long.
You'd have been 30 minutes, so.
Thank you.
I was just playing the law of averages on you, Kyle.
Man, he's a, he's a telltale follower. I want to first say a shout out to Mr. Good, who's on our DC trip. They're on their way there right now, and everything's going smooth so far, so I'm excited about that. At the junior high, we were overall four and a half stars out of five. I was super proud of that. Five of our tests, or seven tested areas made more than one year's worth of growth, and that was significant evidence on our report card. Algebra, geometry, our, our advanced tracks accelerated, and geometry, we had a first-year teacher last year, so I'm super proud of him. Huge shout out, he's the only one who teaches that. That's a really hard class to teach. He's a former math teacher, so I'm super proud of him. Our eighth grade math, our eighth grade science, and our seventh grade ELA also had significant evidence of more than one year's worth of growth. I believe that was a product of using data to inform our instruction. That was one of our building goals last year, and our BLT and all of our teachers and staff did a really nice job of doing that, and I'm just super proud of them. I know that we saw the seventh grade math scores were in the yellow, but they've come up 13 and a half percent points in proficiency ratings since I've been at the junior high. It's been a focus of mine, I take pride in math, and that's something that I wanted to focus on when I got to the junior high, and I believe that was because of our coaching that we received, and I was working with the coach, and then our intentional focus from the teachers to really drill down into that item analysis, like what Kyle was talking about, and make sure we're addressing the state standards. The state standards can be tricky because sometimes, when you just read them, you don't really know what the state is looking for, so you have to look at the item analysis, released items, and then the model curriculum to really see, like, what does the state want us to do here for this specific standard, and I'm really proud of the seventh grade team for that. And then ELA, advanced or accomplished, which are fours and fives on the state tests. In seventh grade, we had 53% of our students get the two highest scores, and in eighth grade, we had nearly 40%. And our ELA department in general collaborates really well with each other. And then last year was the first year that we gave access to our social studies teachers, MAP access on their ELA score, so we can kind of infuse that into some of the standards in ELA, because ELA standards are, are tough. There's a lot, they're very broad, and having our social studies team dive into that and try to help out with that is, is really important. So that was the first year, and they were kind of just learning how to use MAP and like what the scores mean, so I think we'll continue to see growth down the line. Areas for growth, I know that we said earlier that it was 9% for the district, the junior high is a little bit higher than that, so what we want to do is we want to focus on our SST strategies to identify students early on and then make sure we're, you know, putting interventions in place, because I do believe we have an excellent staff at the junior high, but they can't do anything if students aren't there. So our goal is to get that, you know, chronic absenteeism rate down, and I think if we do that, it'll impact all of the areas of our report card. And then kind of along the same lines, I'm actually doing it with Five Points, and with SI, we're doing like MTSS PD, and what that will do is that will align all of our systems. So what I mean by that is, you know, before, we're meeting the students on attendance, we're meeting the students over here about grades, we're meeting the students over here about behavior. Now we have them all together, so we're seeing all the different variables in play, and I feel like we'll be able to better serve our students when we align all of those, and that's what this training is doing. And so being able to do this alongside Brooke and Alicia will be super beneficial for, for us and really for the whole district. And then the last thing, areas for growth, we're just trying to drill down to the areas that we feel like, you know, we're, we're a little bit lower, whether it's seventh grade math, eighth grade ELA, really drill down in the standards, those item analysis questions, and provide coaching to our teachers, whether it be me or whether it be through PD. We're doing NEMZI this year at the junior high, that's a National Math and Science Institute PD for our eighth grade science teachers. We're doing that with the high school. We have some ALL supports that they're doing across the district, and then we're doing some data analysis, and I've just been blown away by the staff at the junior high and their willingness to really dive into the data and some of the work that they produce and show me, I'm, I'm super proud of that. And the last thing is, this is the first year that we have reading intervention at the junior high, so I think we'll, we'll see some improvement with that as well. And, you know, thanks to Jaclyn and Liz for really helping out Mary, who's implementing that this year, so that's all I have. Any questions? Yeah?
I do. For your alignment of our systems, are we close enough with some areas where we are struggling that you feel like if you have more insight into the kiddo coming in, that that's going to make a difference?
I do, I do. I feel like sometimes we're a little late to the game in that, so I feel like when we're aligning everything, we're able to see, like, okay, they're, they're absent this many times, but then we also got like a behavior problem going on, so that's impacting the grades. So we're, when we align all those things, and then hopefully, you know, that will transition from like SI, and then we can transition that data to the high school so that they're better served and better ready to go at the beginning, and sort of trying to learn the students, you know, when they come to the building.
We had a lot of data that has been historically kept on like spreadsheets and not necessarily in a program where you can quickly look, like, for Tyler to look back and see, well, we have this problem in seventh grade, was it a problem in sixth grade, was it a problem in fifth grade? And so that's really a big piece of the MTSS cohort is just the platform, Aubrey, right? Is to be able to look back historically and see, without having to go to different places, and look at all those pieces, attendance through the years and achievement through the years, so that it's not behind the ball, or you're not behind the game.
So like what it looks like now at the junior high, like I said before, we have like different teams meeting, it brings all the players into one room, and so now on our spreadsheet, you see like three different colors for three different areas, like grades, behavior, attendance, and then we're seeing like, you know, trends and things like that, so we can, you know, intervene early and support those. And then we're also, you know, putting processes in place for like absenteeism, and what are we going to do when it hits this threshold? What are we going to do when it hits this threshold to make sure that we're intervening and providing interventions to make sure that kids are getting to school? Or if it's behavior, what are we doing in the classroom to improve that?
So what about our dentists kids? Because they see you've got five points in that.
So we started this year, we're starting with three schools instead of six to try to build this systematically and like make it scalable. It's a lot of, it's a lot, right? It's a lot of work, and we didn't think we could pull everybody out of their building at the same time in a year and try to learn it. Both of the, the, both the junior high and Five Points both have two assistant principals and one, and one building principal, and so we started with that because it was, and then SI being the smallest building and having two administrators, we started with those because we knew it would be easier for somebody to be able to be present all the time.
But the idea is to get.
The idea is that the next year, we would go to the next three, yeah. Yeah. And it's really a three to five-year implementation because of just getting all the pieces in line, but, yeah.
Anybody else?
All right. SI is next. So for SI, we only have one grade, so not a whole lot of information and data to share with you. Some of our strengths is that we do exceed the state standards in the academic achievement, just as the whole district does with our performance index being at 93.3. Our math growth, that gap closing, we did meet two of our subcategories for math specifically. As you guys saw on the pictures and the charts shared earlier, ELA is definitely our biggest concern. So what are we going to do for our student progress? We are restructuring Panther Time. So Panther Time, when I first got to SI, it was the last hour of every Friday. It was just one day a week, a one hour on a Friday, not very effective. So we changed it to be the last 30 minutes of every day, and we have continuously tried to restructure it to where we can meet the students' needs better. We are currently working on restructuring it once again, where our teachers are targeting students specifically in math and ELA, our low groups that are identified, whether it's on a specific standard or if it's over a broadband of standards, but our teachers are But our teachers are looking at MAP data, OS T data, along with additional assessment data that they might have. So our ELA teachers right now are getting some great data from arts and letters. So they're going to be looking at that, cross referencing, creating their groups. We have our groups are low, our bubble kids, which bubble kids can be kids that are barely passing, barely reaching proficient. Or they can be those kids that are high proficient and on the cusp of reaching that accomplished mark. And then we have our high kids identified. Low, the low groups are going to be meeting with math and ELA for two weeks straight. Then our high group will be getting enrichment, which we don't have a whole lot of time for enrichment right now with our current Panther time intervention. So we are now providing a week at a time for enrichment and then a week for our bubble groups. And then those groups with our math and the ELA groups will be flip flopping. So when math is meeting with their low group for two weeks, ELA will be meeting with their high and their bubble group for those two weeks and then they flip flop. During that time, our science, social studies and specials teachers are going to be reinforcing reading concepts in those. Special growth goals are all focusing on literacy and our literacy instructional coaching cycles for our staff. So we are using Celine Thomas, Jack McCrella coming in, meeting specifically with ELA and some teachers. The implementation of MTSS as Tyler spoke about. And I'm super excited about piloting the new curriculum specifically for ELA. So that's arts and letters, which is that continuation of the Wind Wisdom. So I'm excited that we're finally going to have that continuation and that vertical alignment from what the elementary is doing to sixth grade. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to kind of start out by saying I'm super proud of all of our teachers and staff at Dennis. I think just like all the other buildings, we all work super hard. And I think they are totally dedicated to supporting all of our students. Some of our strengths, we did achieve five stars in the category of achievement. Our performance index was one hundred point two out of one hundred and eleven. So we're excited about that, which that is a ranking that basically suggests that we significantly exceed state standards in the area of achievement. Third grade, I am so proud of our third grade teachers. We've been under the auspice of third grade guarantee for roughly a decade now. And the state continues to move that target. They moved it for several years and our third grade team continues to rise to the challenge. Eighty-eight point two percent of our students were proficient or higher despite that, you know, moving target. So we're really proud of that team. Our sixth grade math, to follow Mr. Lotz, they shout out to Mrs. Shoretta, who teaches our sixth grade math for our advanced students. And one hundred percent of those students were proficient or higher. So those are just some of our strengths that we wanted to highlight. Areas for growth, progress continues to be an area of difficulty for us. And that's something that we decided to focus on as a staff this year, even before our report card data came out. So we kind of, you know, had, had that feeling that we really needed to do some work in terms of our instructional support. You know, I was talking with a couple of the principals and I think it's easy to achieve. I think our students definitely meet the state's expectation. But as you're talking about progress, you're talking about an additional years growth. And that sometimes it's just tough for us to demonstrate on paper on those two days that we take our particular tests. And so what we are focusing on at Dennis is a monthly TBT for our non educators. That's just simply an acronym for teacher based teams. I pull our grade level teams by subject area. I was in TBTs yesterday and today and I really enjoyed that time with those teachers. That's a time for us to basically analyze data, reflect, and then plan. And I'm enjoying the work that I'm seeing our teachers doing, the collaboration, the planning of common assessments, the reflection that is happening. I took one team down to a different teacher's classroom today to kind of show something that she was displaying in her classroom. And that was our second grade teachers went and visited a third grade classroom. And it just gave them a lot of perspective for where their current students are continuing to grow. So I'm truly thankful for the time and the resources to be able to have our monthly TBT meetings. In terms of achievement, fourth grade ELA and math achievement are definitely our focus. As you saw on the one slide, math across the district on value added is definitely an area of concern. So one of the things that we're working on is in our TBTs, really trying to do some work to restructure our math block. I find and our teachers find that it's just difficult to fit it all in. Your instruction, your intervention, your reteaching, all of those things into a math block can be very difficult. On top of supporting literacy interventions for students who might be on a reading improvement and monitoring plan. Another thing that we're doing is identifying students who are projected to score limited or basic on OST. We're using our MAP data to really identify and target those students from an instructional standpoint. And then we're checking in monthly during our TBT times to make sure that we have a close eye on those particular students. And I think that is it.
Any questions? I just had one question. Like you talked about the TBTs. How frequently do you think, those are monthly, but how frequently do you think teachers are using data outside of the monthly? Like is that something they're doing on a consistent as they're planning or is that something they just take from the monthly stuff?
Sure. I think just like with any classroom of students, you have, you know, teachers that are probably on a little bit of a spectrum, right? I think some of our teachers are using data consistently day to day. Some are more of a, you know, twice a month where they're taking data and reflecting and analyzing. Some of our modules too, in our new curriculum are quite lengthy and long. So I don't know that our data comes in as frequently as it has in, in past curriculums. So I say that to say, I think our ELA teachers in particular have really long modules. So their, their data reflection may not occur as frequently as a math teacher. So that's kind of where I said, I think you have teachers across the spectrum in terms of their data analyzation.
Students who are receiving like reading intervention, for example, though, those teachers are, are doing a weekly, quick assessment to monitor their progress. So they would have, you know, when it comes to those students, they would have more, more data than like maybe a classroom teacher would.
And if the teacher needs help with how to do that, we have that.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. So, hi. So at five points, we, I don't know which way I'm pointing. So I had a lot more and they were like, you need to take some of this off because we're going to lose them. So, so for me, I feel like I taught at five points for a long time and being there as a leader, it's, it's an honor to be there as a leader. But I really like data and I was an ELA teacher and a lot of people don't. It can scare, it can scare people. But historically and currently at five points, we are always high in achievement. We, like this year, five stars in achievement, our performance index was ninety-one point five, which means we have one oh one point eight performance index score, which the maximum is the one eleven point three. So from an achievement standpoint, we are always, we're always killing it. Gap closing is another strength there. Out of the five stars, we received four. So we are, according to the state, we are exceeding state standards and closing educational gaps. Specifically when you look down and you dial down into five points data in ELA, the growth of our multiracial students with disabilities and our overall growth index for all students was a positive score. So those are all wonderful things. When you have a high achieving school, if you check most schools across the state of Ohio, you also end up having something that looks like sometimes progress doesn't look as good. Value added data is something that most classroom teachers that have value added data hate value added data. Because it's like when you're asking the questions, it's very hard to understand. It can almost mess with a teacher's mind too because you have a very high achieving kid and you think these kids are going to kill it. And then value added doesn't look as good. So when you look at the high achieving, just like Tara at five points, my sixth grade math class, right? Because those are fifth graders taking sixth grade math, a hundred percent of them are proficient or higher, which they should be, right? They're a grade level advanced. However, their progress doesn't always look as high as it should. When at five points alone, we probably have thirty-five, forty percent of our student population has some sort of gifted ID. And when you have kids coming in, and I know some people don't want to hear this, but when you have kids coming in, scoring a perfect score on a fourth grade ELA test or a fifth grade ELA test, they're coming in with a really high, yes, you can show growth, but it is hard. It is, I've done it as that teacher, I've done it. And I dialed down into that data to figure out how do I, how do I push these kids? Progress to me is you're meeting the needs of every child, the high, the medium, the low. But it is hard to do when you're talking high kids and when you're talking struggling students. So there is evidence we fell short in that area. We have a two, last year we were a three. That pains me deeply, but then I, I tried to make myself feel a little better because in, in MAP data, when you look at MAP student growth, we are meeting growth expectations in all subject areas, all grade levels. So things that I'm going to do this year is, first of all, I think, although I feel like I have a good understanding of value added data, not everybody does. And I feel like I need refreshers as well because it is such a unique, complicated data measure. The state also slightly changes things. They've changed it ever since COVID. So I feel like it's important to make sure we are currently, we are always receiving new information. So we're looking at PD to receive for value added so that we, along with our APs and everyone can kind of dig, not only understand value added data, but dig into our real data, right now data to understand how we can better support teachers. One of the things I'm looking at too is my current model, our TOR, our teacher of record, gifted classes for fourth and fifth grade for math and reading, they are taught by a GIS. Although I think that is great, those are our highest achieving students. Currently, my model is I have one GIS assigned to fourth grade and that person does TOR, reading and math. And another GIS assigned to fifth grade and that person does reading and math for fifth. I'm looking at if I had those teachers loop. So I have one that does fourth grade math, TOR, and she does the four or five, and then she loops up with those kids and teaches sixth grade math. I think we might see some changes there because I think then you know those kids and you know how to push them when you get them. They don't necessarily know that that's what I'm thinking yet, but I think, so don't tell them, sorry, I'm being videotaped. However, I just think when you're doing what's right for kids, you're going to look at data in that way. They're two great teachers, but I just think I'm asking them to, to really do some heavy lifting with reading and math. And I think maybe if they could really be departmentalized, I might see some growth there. I also, to me, I, I had special ed, I also had a lot of gifted students in my day. And I care a lot about like intimately understanding gifted data. We are, there's a few of us attending a gifted indicator PD tomorrow at Montgomery County ESC to really kind of look at where, where are we falling short? Are there better things we can do and how can we help kids? Early literacy was another area of growth, but to me, that always is going to be an area of growth for teaching little people to read. So I think, I mean, I have kid, I mean, from an investment standpoint, my third grader took his first ever OST test today. Cause third graders take it in October. He took it today and I said, how did you do on the essay? And he's like, is the essay where I write, where I typed? Oh yeah, yes, it is. Tell me you wrote multiple paragraphs and he did, he wrote two, so we're good. But I just think we're teaching little people, not just how to read, but then we're asking them to do well on a test. And it's a lot of pressure. We had little kids today in tears and I don't, the state doesn't see that, right? We see that. But we're always going to work, I mean, in, in that realm, we're going to work hard, we're going to focus on that data to keep pushing kids. This year, although we're doing MTSS with the other buildings, I feel like we've done a great job really analyzing MAP data. But because we have had that data, I feel like we've gotten a little bit away from diving into OST data the way that we used to because that was all we had. So like Tyler, I think mentioned about really giving time for staff to dig into item analysis, look at trends. And really, although a lot of the teachers aren't comfortable with it, really looking at value added data as individuals, but then not living in, okay, what was your score last year? And what can we do now? Because there is really unique data with, that lives within value added in EVOS. And within there, you can kind of pull that layers apart and look at, okay, if Johnny's coming in really high, what is the system projecting him to do? So we can know how to better enrich for him. So I don't know, I think that that's it. Do you guys have questions for me?
I love it that you're, you are also getting the training in order to, I just think it's a great leader that is willing to dig in yourself so that you can lead your building. You're right, this is very confusing stuff. And for teachers that are in front of the littles every day, that's their focus. And so this is kind of overwhelming, so I appreciate your leadership of that.
Thank you. I think too, like Tara said, our teachers do a great job. And the last thing I ever want is them to feel demoralized when they see data and they feel like they gave their everything. So I would rather empower them, like we can't live there. All we can do is what does that tell us? What can we use from that and how can we grow and move forward?
That's a great job.
Here? To go along with the shout outs, I'm going to speak a little bit about Clear Creek. Not that there's a lot of data on the report card, but I do want to give a shout out to Jessica Jones, who's taken over there and the teachers at Clear Creek. You know, part of the group that's doing some coverage and has spent some time, days down at Clear Creek. And it's, you know, it's just running as if Kerry is still there. And that's what you want to be as a leader, right? You want to set up a building that will run when you're not there. So they're doing a great job, you know, keeping things together. And so I just wanted to give a shout out there also. There's just not a lot of data when it comes to a K one building. Some of it just gets lost in translation anyways. But the only thing that they're rated on was the gap closing and it really was only for chronic absenteeism, which not surprising was a five out of five because five year olds have to rely on their parents to get into school. So it's really judging parents. So they did fine there. And then also in early literacy, we just are always working in the K one building of trying to, you know, move students who are coming to us not on track for reading and provide the right interventions in, in curriculum to have them on track when they leave. So that's really the focus is at Clear Creek. Anybody have any questions?
Do we have a lot of kindergartners coming to us with preschool?
I don't know the stats right off the top of my head. I believe it's, it's been trending down. You know, like I think historically there was probably more kids that went to preschool before they came to kindergarten than now. Just different beliefs in the community, you know, different people moving in that maybe don't have that background knowledge about how, what preschool might provide. But if you want me to look up.
No, I'm just curious. I mean, that's when you look at the trend of like percentage on track for like reading diagnostic, we have such a high percentage in kindergarten and then we dropped to like seventy-five in first grade and then we swing back down. So I was just curious.
Yeah. I think, I think some of that has to do with part of the, like some of the diagnostic tests, right? Are testing the whole kindergarten curriculum in with a half day. We're not, I don't know how much we are able, we have to really like air down, right? And focus really only on reading and math. And so there's, you know, pieces there though. Thank you. Let us know, email us if you have any other questions. We'll make sure, Matt, did you already send everybody the?
I think I cleaned up.
Okay, good.
Thank you to all of the schools. I love to hear the passion that you guys have for your students. It's very clear that this isn't just something you're checking the boxes of, that you're really digging in if you really care. So thank you for that. Okay. And you're welcome to leave if you'd like to. Don't feel like you need to stay. So it's very.
Cal camp.
He's a timeout. He didn't have the link for it. Okay, three point three, we have any committee reports?
Oh, we do. I was going to turn out to a predictor.
The curriculum committee met last week on October the fifteenth. We really just shared a really brief overview of the Panther commitments for this year that we shared at the roadshow. We talked a little bit about the report card. We wanted to share and get some input on our math, district math vision based on the new state's math program, but we didn't get there. So I sent that out on a Google form and hopefully we'll get some input from the committee then.
Okay. Three point four, discussion of other businesses required. Have anything? Okay, Mrs. Stacy, you'd like to start with four point one?
Yes. Item four point one is approval of the September's financials. We're on board, dox for your review, a few highlights. We brought in four point two million dollars in the month of September. Two and a half million was for recovery taxes and we did receive our settlements from both one and Montgomery County. So that's great. But then that also means that our revenue is kind of considerably slowed down between now and February. We received a one point three million for state funding. Through September, we've been receiving state funding based off of last year's revenue amounts. This in October is when you'll see a spike because we're finally starting to get revenue in for fiscal twenty-six under House Bill ninety-six that passed in June. And then our Willback and Holstead did come in in October, so we didn't have that until September. So again, revenue is going to considerably slow down between now and February. and February, so you'll see our cash balances kind of starting to come down. We received in $400,000 for all of the revenue, which was mainly school fees and paid participation fees. When I'm looking at a three-year average in revenue from July through September for the last three years, we're hovering around 36% of our total revenue that came in by September 30th. This year, we're at 37%, so we're just slightly ahead, but we're on par. On expenditure side, we've spent just under $6 million in September. All of our categories are coming in at or slightly under budget through September, which is good. When I look at a three-year average on our expenditure side, we've spent about 25% of our expenditures through September, and we're at 24.5, so we're just barely under. We did close September with 121 days of cash on hand, but again, that's going to considerably come down before February. Anyone have any questions on those? Do you have a question?
Can I get a motion to approve the September 2025 financial statement?
It's moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Fab.
Yes.
Palage.
Yes.
Playhouse.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Upstate.
Item 4.2 is approval of a donation of $75 for the Student Meal Balance Fund, and those lists of donors are attached. That balance is actually $37,604. So it is, people are so generous, and that fund continues to go up. Item 4.3, approval of a donation of $50 from James and Deborah Rickett to the Junior High Showfire Program. And then item 4.4 is an approval of a donation of $1,000 from the Military Order of the Purple Heart to the J ROTC program.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the approval of items 4.2 through 4.4? Some of?
Second.
Any questions?
Roll call, please. Fab.
Yes.
Palage.
Yes.
Playhouse.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Next, we have Mrs. Huster. 5.1, policy revisions. We are second reading this tonight, and so with approval, they will move to our Board Policy Panel. We are probably going to have to call a special policy meeting next month, because Neil loves Lady, looks at state everything. There's going to be five or six transportation policies that we need to have two readings on in incorporated or our board policy.
Does Neil come?
I think it's actually going to be a reflection. They're pretty simple policies. Are they, anything that are significantly changing things for us with transportation?
I can tell you, one of the policies is that they want to treat the van drivers like drivers in the sense of that they would have to stay at your physical, but they need to be in a joint statement. That's one of the changes I'm watching. They were just the way that they're carried in as a Department of Transportation rules. They weren't in the group, and it's not exactly like that, but they are going to be in a group that goes through rules.
Can I get a motion for the approval of the policy revisions? Second reading.
It's moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a second question. On the release time, that can be like any, I guess, like whenever it falls during a student's day, right? There was my friend.
Religious instruction during core instruction time.
Okay. I was just curious, based on my.
Roll call, please. Fab.
Yes.
Palage.
Yes.
Playhouse.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Next, we have Mr. Teter, personnel report.
Good evening. Madam Board President, Representative Board, I come before you to seek approval for our personnel report. A couple of highlights on there. I know you see that we are going to have our institutional assistants retiring. The rest of this kind of, you know, that personnel report to make sure that we are where we can be with our supplementals and others.
I have to tell you, when I was reviewing this and I saw Mrs. Fortner, I think of her as the person outside Five Points that is dancing and welcoming the kids, and that's, you always have amazing, amazing feedback from parents and how welcoming she is, and just how much she loves Springbrough, Springbrough kids doing what she does. So congratulations to her, but a big loss too for us. All right. Can I get a motion for the approval of the personnel report? Second. Any questions?
Roll call, please. Fab.
Yes.
Palage.
Yes.
Playhouse.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
All right, I'm 6.2. I come before you seeking approval for our athletic report. On here, you'll see several supplementals for winter sports. A lot of times, we think we know how supplementals are getting chopped up between the sports, and when they show up, we learn otherwise, and just occasionally, we've got to come back with revisions, and then the rest of them are just approvals to make sure our sports are in good shape.
Great. And something, when we were doing our agenda review, I was just asking, how long has it been since we've looked at our supplementals? And they were saying that it's in contract, and I appreciate the fact that we're looking at this, and I know it's always very cut up, where you've got some coaches doing it for free. Sometimes you take one position, you've got four people there, whatever. So I think it's definitely something worth looking at to make sure that we are, you know, not high, not low, kind of in the middle of, or wherever we feel like we should be, so.
That's quite a task, and I want to thank Mike Alperton, who sent her dollars over there for her work in Patel. Now, I think she understands some of the challenges to right-size that, and I think that will be something that's been looked at for a long, long time, but it's something worth.
Both the clubs and the athletic stuff. There's a lot of supplemental stuff we do at schools, and we want to make sure that it's equitable with what is, like, I was, when I was talking to them this week, I was thinking about the Borough Buddies, because that is such a huge job for the coordination of the teachers and the kids and all of that. So you look at a supplemental like that, it's like, got to make sure you're compensating in a way that is looking at the amount of time that it's taking, so.
Exactly. And I do want to clarify one thing, that our athletic supplementals are not part of the collective bargaining agreement, so they are not for that review.
Got it, got it.
But what we can do when negotiations come up next year, is make sure that they're where they need to be.
So we don't have a systematic time, since they're not part of that?
We haven't had a systematic time for any of the supplementals, regardless of the part of the CBA for a long, long time, and that's what this will be tackled with, the ones that are part of the CBA.
Got it, got it. Okay, okay. Did I already ask her? Okay. Can I get a motion for the approval of the athletic support?
It's moved.
Second. Any questions?
Roll call, please. Fab.
Yes.
Palage.
Yes.
Playhouse.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Upstate.
Thank you. Okay, 7.1, can I start with you?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Sarah?
I just want to thank the people who made some donations for our kids. They'll benefit, they've found the donations. I really appreciate all the time and effort going into the report card. I love seeing celebrations happening, you know, not only at a district level too, but, you know, in each building too, because I know our staff are working really hard. And also, really, too, like, even if we're doing great, you know, areas to continue to keep doing great, or other ways to continue to improve. And then also, too, the Aaron, I really appreciate all the different stories that you're telling to help shape our district. Lots of different areas are being highlighted. I truly appreciate it. I know you get probably a lot of submissions too, so I hope everybody keeps doing that, because that would be great.
Thank you.
Oh, and good luck to all the kids who are still competing in various athletics and also marching. They're going to pick one this weekend.
Yeah, thank you again to the folks that donated. We appreciate the support and partnership of our community and the way they continue to come alongside and support our students. So thank you. Yeah, I too, we just thank everybody involved in the report card presentation. I know there's a lot of work that goes into really digging into that data, you know, even though it's maybe not exactly where we want to be. I appreciate that there's the willingness to really get in and think creatively about how we can improve. You know, it's still a very great score, and I don't want that to get lost, but, you know, it's a testament to the district, right, that everybody wants to take it even higher. And so just thank you. I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, and appreciate, appreciate the presentation on that. And then the last thing I'd say, I think this is our last meeting before the upcoming election, which is going to encourage everyone in our community to go out and exercise their rights as citizens to make their voice heard for the bond issue that is on the ballot. That's it.
I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in the report card also. Knowing it takes a lot of work, and Kyle obviously was real happy with what he was doing up there. But, you know, it is, even though it was just a little bit lower this year, I'm still real proud of where it is. Thanks for all the donations, especially the $1,000 for the ROTC. I think that's really great. And, right, like Sarah said, good luck to the teams that are still competing in competition for the state term. Thanks.
Of course, I'm going to talk about the report card. What I saw in every one of those leaders was just such a heart for what they're doing, and the desire, because we could be sitting back saying, "We're four and a half stars. We're doing a great job," but we're looking and saying, "What else can we do?" Even if we got a five star someplace, if there's a, if there's a gap someplace. So I just appreciate that. I think that the way we're going to continue to grow as a district is to use data in everything we're doing, and looking at how we're financially supporting coaches to come alongside. Because when I went through education as a teacher, we didn't learn about data, and so we have to teach people that that was not part of their background. So I think that we're doing a better and better job with that, and when you don't get the score you want, it's what you do with it, with that information. And I feel like what you represented tonight was a great job of, we're digging into it. So kudos to all of you that have been part of it. You've done a great job. The last thing, I just wanted to say, like Jamie, this is the last board meeting before the election, so we just encourage you, if you have any questions, to please let us know. We want to get factual information out there, so everybody can make the best informed decision regarding the bond issue. Second.
Stacy? I'll just give a quick update on where we are at with property tax reform. As of 2:00 this afternoon, they have passed additional two bills out of the House, which makes a total of four bills right now that have been passed out of the House that are now going over to the Senate. Last week, they approved House Bill 129, which would include substitute and emergency levies in the 20 mil floor calculation. That would take us off the 20 mil floor, and we lose about $4.5 million. They also approved House Bill 309, which would expand the control of budget commissions, which kind of takes more, or more control away from local boards of education, to where if you couldn't show the need to the budget commission to collect all of the dollars that you, that have been approved by the voters, they can not collect all of the taxes necessary and provide those to the school district. I don't think that would ever happen to us. We're one of the lowest spending districts in the state, so I don't see that happening. But if there's districts who maybe are sitting on a lot more cash, they might have a little bit more trouble of showing the need to collect all of their levies. But again, that's House Bill 309. Then today, as of 2:00 PM, they did pass through the House, House Bill 186, which would cap reappraisals to inflation. And initially, when that bill was introduced, it was just looking forward. So tax year '25, which we're in right now, payable '26, which would affect us in half a year of fiscal '27, and then beyond. Then they include, introduce an amendment that would go back to tax year '23. So then they were going to go back to tax years where we borrowed to receive the money. And so that was part of our testimony when we were up there last week, was to say, "We've signed contracts, we've entered into CBAs, we've, you know, increased debt based off of money that we were planning on getting, or that we have been getting." And so yesterday, before it came out of committee, they did take out that retro piece. They're still going to give the tax break if it does move forward, but they're going to make schools whole. They set aside $360 million, which, you know, it would still be affected in tax year '25 and beyond. So we would be somewhere between $3 and $4 million on that one. We're still working through the simulations, because they're, they have, they passed an amendment to pull out new construction and to pull out any tax abatements that were expiring and coming onto the tax duplicates. So there's going to be a little bit of variance there, but it would still be, it wouldn't be the 8.9 that we were looking at possibly losing. It would be more closer to the $4 million range. Then they passed House Bill 335, which would limit inside village growth to about inflation as well. And so then, in that case, we would lose about $2 million a year. So.
So all those are, those are all annuals?
Those are, no, the 3 to 4 million for House Bill 186 would be within our current forecast area.
Like the forecast period?
The House Bill 335 would be $2 million a year. And then putting our substitute levy into the 20 mil floor would be $4.5 million. So those all affect each other differently. So those total, but the total.
That it could be looking at.
Oh, it could be upwards of $15 million.
Out of our.
Out of our, in our total.
Four schools.
I'm sorry.
Which school were we doing?
Oh, no. So that's part of it. I mean, I know they're trying to do something, because they're worried that this abolish taxes will end up on the ballot, either in May or November of next year. So the Senate offered a bill, and they had their first hearing, Senate Bill 93. So they have a new bill out that would take away the ability for local boards of education to run any type of levy, whether it's an income tax levy or a property tax levy. And instead, they would establish a statewide property tax and sales tax to fund schools. So that would completely take away the local control of anything, and it would all be basically the state deciding how much per pupil they can get, and then categorically on top of that as well. So that's something that the Senate has introduced and had their first hearing on yesterday. So all of these other bills are going to go over to the Senate for them to start their hearings, and then the Senate bill, it's going, it has its first hearing, and it'll go through hearings, and if it passes out of committee, it'll go to the House. So it's like, they're just now both doing some things. And so we're just, all we're doing is trying.
Then all of this will be wrapped up, and we'll know what we're facing by Thanksgiving. And it will take effect when?
Oh, they're all different. So tax year '25, the first effect we would actually have by any of them would be our fiscal '27. But then again, it's like, they're hoping for November, but they have no, I mean, if the Senate changes anything, it goes back to, it just goes back and forth until they agree. So it's really hard to say.
Well, their bill is wildly different place than the board described, their coming to the House. Like, do we have any sense of?
Senate Bill 93, that?
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's like a, that's a totally different. So I'm just like wondering, like, are they, do we have a sense of, it's just too early to tell, like, how.
Yeah, we have no way of knowing.
Senate will react to the ones that.
They threw out a per pupil average of $11,000.
$5.35.
$5.35 per child, which, for us.
I said it's an increase.
Yes, that's less than, so.
But there, it's not going to be that, it's no doubt.
But.
And I will say, the Senate Bill 93, there were several people in the committee for its first hearing that were very concerned. So it's got a lot of work.
That feels like.
It's got a lot more before it even makes that.
Yeah, but I'm just curious, if we had a sense here, what the support is like of any of the other ones from the House.
We should know once they have their very first hearing. They'll do an introduction to where they have invited guests only, and then they'll kind of start talking through that before they open it up for other people to come. So I have no, we have no, it just, we're just past at 2:00 today, and there hasn't been anything out on those yet, other than the ones that were passed. And then the ones from last week, there's been no discussion. They haven't been added to any of the committee lists for the Senate yet, so it's early.
And then you saw in my board update, all of the non-monetary, we're supposed to be deregulated?
Yeah, yeah.
There were about 10 of those that, yeah, that are out there. I talked to Michelle Tesca at the Chamber deal on Monday. So we do have a fighter for us there, which she's, she's fighting hard, but it was discouraging to hear her talk what she's fighting up against. So at least we have somebody there that's in our court, and she strongly believes in Springbrough and what we're going for, but she's up against a lot. So. And we're figuring out ways within, right, to find ways that are simple to understand, to educate our community about what is truly happening today, how much is relying on the taxpayer to fund schools and the state including their part. Well, and I will say, I listened to Tara's testimony. Kudos to you. You absolutely nailed it. So when we talk about a way to simply explain it, I don't know how they could not, I mean, you made it so, so practical. So I appreciate you doing that. I would not want to be sitting in that hot seat with the questions coming in. I would not want to be sitting in that hot seat with the questions coming at you, and I can see why other treasurers aren't doing it, but thank you guys for going up there and supporting it. I hope that once we do, once this all comes out, our community needs to know what Spring